To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first order of business will be roll call. Let the record show that Commissioner Dillon is absent with all the rest in attendance. Next item will be the minutes. For approval of minutes of the regular planning commission meeting of September 23rd, 2023. Can I get a motion for the approval of those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay. I got a motion by Commissioner Fitz and seconded by Commissioner Becker. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show four people said aye with one absentee. Moving on to written communication, item C. Was there any written communication for this evening?
There are no written communications.
Oh, sorry. I used to look over there. Okay, sorry.
There are no written communications.
Alright, thank you. No written communications. Then item D, going over to oral communication. Members of the public are invited to address the planning commission on any item not listed on the agenda. Public comments are generally limited to five minutes per speaker. Please note that the state law prohibits the commission from acting on non-agenda items. Are there anybody willing? No? Okay. So I'm going to close the oral communications and move on to E, public hearings. E1, hearing to consider U20224-003 and DR2024-007. A resolution approving a conditional use permit and design review to allow for a new community assembly use with building and onsite improvements at 6840 Rich Avenue, APN092-0052-001-04. Subject site is ZONED CMU-O-T, sorry, OT, -OT, and Commercial Mixed Use with the Old Town overlay and has a general plan designation of Commercial Mixed Use presented by Brandon DeLucas.
Good evening, Chairperson and Commissioners. Brandon DeLucas with the presentation this evening. So just as a quick overview for tonight's agenda on this item. It is a conditional use permit and design review request for a new community assembly facility, kind of repurposing the old Moose Lodge and turning it into that kind of similar use, but in this case is a Hindu temple. And I'll kind of go over those items, also the CEQA exemption, as well as staff's recommendation. So the applicant is Joe Halsack of NOAA Architects Group. The project location is 6840 Rich Avenue. It is owned by Rich Avenue Properties LLC. The previous use, as stated, was the Moose Lodge. The site has been vacant for, when I was talking with the applicant, for the last two to three years, but I believe it's a little longer than that, that that has kind of sat vacant. So the site, as stated, is ZONED CMU OT, which is Commercial Mixed Use with the Old Town overlay. The subject site is bounded by Magnolia Street, Thornton, and Olive Street, and kind of Grand Avenue. It's interesting, the property is addressed off of Rich Avenue, but if you look, Rich Avenue actually dead ends into the property. Rich Avenue used to continue through, so if you look, you can see the old right-of-way there, but that was since abandoned. But that's why the address is on Rich instead of Magnolia. And the applicant is, as part of their building permits, will be addressing the addressing and readdressing it onto Magnolia for fire life safety, just for response times. And the site is generally surrounded by commercial, kind of along Thornton, but also residential directly next door and kind of the neighborhood, directly adjacent to that. So the Newark Municipal Code 1718020 allows for a community assembly use with the approval of a conditional use permit. I will attempt how to say the community center's name. I will butcher it. I do apologize. The Shangri-Shanga Community Center, which is a Hindu temple. They will offer prayer rooms, prayer services, and there is a kitchen, so they will do some meal preparations. They're proposing to operate Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM, and then 6:00 PM to 8:30 AM, and then Saturday and Sundays from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Staff did want to note that this use permit does not grant any outdoor events. If they would like outdoor events, they would have to follow our municipal code guidelines on that, including possibly issuing an MUP for any type of events that occur outdoor. So the project will occupy the existing 5,730 square foot building. There are minor site improvements, which includes upgrading the trash enclosure, repaving/repairing the parking lot. And within repaving, it is kind of, the applicant is proposing to slurry seal. However, there may be some areas that need more intense kind of repair work. And then they're re-striping the parking lot to re-designate the parking stalls, and they're readjusting where the accessible handicap stalls were. They are also going to be replacing existing dead and dying landscaping and updating the exterior light fixtures and ensuring they comply with the current municipal code requirements. They are also adding some bicycle parking near the front. And there are two conditions also kind of apply to site improvements that they will need to do. From engineering, they are required to repair the damaged curb, gutter, and sidewalk along the driveway that shares with Magnolia Street there. There's some uplifting from the trees and things like that. So repairing that, as well as repaving the parking lot, which again includes the slurry seal, just because it has been vacant for the past few years, it has started to really degrade. Maybe, next? Okay, there we go. So they also include some minor exterior elevation improvements. Most of these are just color and material updates, just to try to make it consistent. There's some patching that was done over the years that looks like a different color. They are adding a new double door into the prayer room area. And then for the overall site plan, they are not really changing any of the internal. They're just going to be updating it to meet current fire life safety requirements. So again, they're utilizing the existing layout. They're updating electrical, plumbing, and mechanical. And then within this, the two main rooms will be the prayer room and kind of the dining room. And then you have kind of the ancillary office uses on the side, and then another meeting room towards the front of the building. Under CEQA, this project is categorically exempt under two of the categorical exemptions, the first one being 15301, which is existing facilities. They're proposing minor improvements to the site, and there is no expansion of the use because it is still similar to the previous use. Additionally, the common sense exemption being 15061, that it can be seen for certain that this improvement will not have any effect on the environment. So staff requests that the planning commission consider adopting the draft resolution approving the conditional use permit, based on the findings provided in the draft resolution. And staff is available for any questions.
Any questions?
Is the applicant in the audience?
We do have the applicant here, available to answer any questions.
I just had one question as far as if there would be any music or dancing or noise in the evening that might affect the residential people back.
So as part of their normal prayer service, there may be, but they would have to comply with the Newark Noise Ordinance for any internal noise, or any music internally. Externally, again, that kind of goes to their outdoor events, that they wanted to have an event and have music playing outdoors, that would be subject to possibly the MUP process.
And they're going to be open till 9:00 PM? Is that the, that's the plan?
That's the plan, correct.
Just want to make sure that doesn't affect the neighbors if there's something happening.
Absolutely.
Just one quick question. Staff has no concern about parking in and around the site?
So, yes and no. There could be parking demand items, but the code does not require any additional parking, given that it's in the Old Town overlay. The previous use was a community assembly use. So I believe, I believe it's technically deficient by like two or three stalls, but they get an exemption of those number of stalls because it's the same as the previous use. But, you know, they'll have to definitely work with their community members to ensure carpooling and what they can. And they're really trying to design this to pull from within the local community.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. It's probably, like, without question, but because the building has not been used for so long, of course, everything will be up to date as far as fire codes, if, you know, all that, and electrical, and just make sure that all that is...
Yes, that's what they're proposing as their interior improvements for the electrical plumbing. I believe there was some damage done internally while the property's been vacant, so they are updating that, and that will need to comply with current codes.
One other question.
Commissioner, please.
There was proper notice to all the neighbors and everything. Did you get any feedback from any of the...
Staff did not receive any written communication regarding this item.
Okay.
We...
Oh, okay.
Okay, if the commission is done with their comments, we'll open it up to public comment. So I'll open it up. Please come to the podium, state your name and your address if you could, and you have five minutes.
My name is Chris Shaw. My family's had a property adjacent to this property since 1960. I've been involved in this property since 1968. I remember when this building was built, and it was actually a liquor store before the Moose. Never really worked as a commercial. I do have some objections that I'd like you to consider. But let me just state that my comments have nothing to do with racial intolerance. It's merely, I want to uphold the theory behind the Old Town overlay, which I've been involved in since pretty much the beginning. This particular property where the building is was not included in the original overlay plan. They acquired later on a small strip that goes to Thornton Avenue. The requirement at that time was your property had to be on Thornton Avenue. So my issues are this. Not that having a Hindu temple is a bad idea. I just believe it's in the wrong area. This Old Town concept, one of the, the things that we're promoted with is that it would promote our, the founders, the Portuguese, the Hispanics, the people from Spain, the Native Americans. And that it would encourage people to not drive, but walk as pedestrians through widened sidewalks on Thornton and little knuckles that we were going to put at the corners. So that the various commercial businesses could work together in promoting this, this area. And the problem I see is a couple. One, right there, this is, this building is at the beginning of this Old Town overlay. It's going to be the, one of the first things that you see, although it's not all that visible from Thornton. It, it will be something. And they were talking about putting an archway over Thornton, right at that spot, right at that corner, to, to honor this area. If you drive down this area, this street, you're going to see taquerias, a multitude of them, the tortilla factory, you're going to see a Portuguese club, several restaurants, all serving, and also the hamburger joint there, which is an iconic hamburger joint that was actually the original Nation's Burgers. And they all serve meat. They all serve beef. Hindus do not eat beef. They, they believe that a cow is a sacred creature. I do not see how this is going to make these other businesses on Thornton more successful through this, this plan. The plan just doesn't make sense to have it there. Other places in Newark, perhaps, yes. But having it there is not a good mix. And I thought the idea of the, the Old Town was to kind of conform, make, make everyone conform to a joint goal. And I, I don't see how that, that's going to help. And I guess I'm concerned that if you approve this, which is kind of out of the realm, when this area was founded, there were, no Hindus founded this area. It was Hispanics, Portuguese, Spanish, and Native Americans. Then further down the street in this, in this reorganization, what other kind of non-conforming uses would you folks approve? And it would lose the, the identity that I think that we were trying to start at the beginning. And, you know, if you, I know you've been to Pleasanton, I know you've been to Livermore and, and on Main Street, on those old areas. Do you see any Hindu temples in either area? No, you don't. It just doesn't fit. And that's what zoning is all about, in my opinion. So, and I, I think it's even a little, you know, Mission San Jose is not that far from Newark. And we, we honor those, those people that came and founded our area. I'll just conclude by saying, you're shooting yourselves in the foot by, by doing this. And if, if it doesn't fit, then you can't submit it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're, you're in, Chris. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairperson. My name is Joe Halsack. I represent NOAA Group Architects. For the record, we're at 3990 Old Town Avenue, Suite C107 in San Diego. I'll basically make myself available for questions, but there were a few comments that were discussed, and I'd like to just chat about those for a second. First of all, when I first became aware of this project and came to the site, it was as it is, highly rundown. It was actually kind of scary. It was all boarded up, but vagrants had torn the doors, torn the plywood off the doors, and it was pitch black and extremely questionable on the inside. We're trying to clean it up. It is a use that is permitted by the code. It is, I think, a good use because it is actually fairly difficult to find suitable locations for temples. I can tell you that on any given day, at any given time, there will be either no people or maybe a handful of people. They're very quiet, private places. They are not in any way like traditional, like Catholic church, where there's a service on Sunday or two services on Sunday. You go on an individual basis. That said, most of the time, there will probably be three or four or five or six people in this building. They're very, very, very sparsely utilized. There are auspicious occasions, typically four or so per year, where there may be enough people to utilize the parking lot. But be that as it may, the parking for temples is actually hard to find and to satisfy. We happened to find a formerly used Moose Lodge, and I guess other uses before that, including a liquor store, but there may be a couple of times in any given calendar year or a handful of times where the parking lot is mostly full, but the vast majority of times, it won't be. Temples are very quiet, very, very quiet. There is no chanting, there is no amplified music, you know, anything that happens in the temples is basically interior. The food preparation for temples is essentially people bringing food, much like they would at a, at a more commonly used American church. It's just, it's just for after service or after worship. The renovations that we have to do are barely extensive just because of the state of the building. It's an old building, and again, it had been in disrepair just because homeless had moved in and continued to move in. When I was there measuring the building, the police showed up and wanted to know what I was doing there. So it's clearly on people's radar, right? But, you know, we will clean up the parking lot, we will paint the building, we will add sufficient lighting and security lighting. We will be able to get rid of the chain link fence and have it be, you know, an asset to the community rather than a detriment to the community. So I'll make myself available for questions. I'm sorry I spoke so long.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir? Please approach the podiums, state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I came a little late. So I represent the ownership team. We're a bunch of friends and families who wanted to move to Newark. It's 10 years now. I know the development director for a long time. It was Terrence Grindel, who was the city manager or so at the time. So from then till the last year or so, this went into a zoning issue. It took a lot of time, and it was very hard to protect the property because after the Moose Lodge left, it was the COVID and many other things. It is a small, you know, set of family members who wanted to build townhomes and move in and make it as our home. That was the intent to start with. And so in course of time, the zoning was the one which, because they're not making a decision. I think many projects are stalled like that. So now it is opening up, and we wanted to have this facility be there only for the time till the city makes the decision on allotting the condos project for that. So it is maybe two years, three years, that's the ask here. So in that interim time, it has become very difficult for us to protect the building. I get calls all the time from the police. I get calls from the auto shop, burger shop next to the property, the neighborhood. It's very difficult. I really appreciate while we are working on the other project because it's small, it would be a big help for the families also. We would like to make the condos there, which we have also worked the preliminary plan a few years back. But again, you know, the zoning changed. There was a relaxation on the parking lot per apartment. So we would like to make, I don't know what it would be, like a 40 units, 50 units, the city would decide on that. It would be a mixed usage because there's a small area which is facing to the Thornton side, the other one is not facing. We have a burger shop and another. So my request would be to protect the property and the interest of the people, the neighborhood. I really appreciate if the decision is made to open it as a facility for the gatherings, and it, it would also make the neighborhood safe. I, myself, once I was inside the building trapped, police had to come to pull me out because somebody called and I was, I was held kind of hostage. Not really hostage. I went in and there were a group of people who, it was my mistake. I just went in and didn't even know. I just opened, I saw these people, and they were a little bit aggressive on me. Then somebody from the neighborhood called and I was held. So I keep getting continuous letters from the city of Newark. You have to take care of this, you have to take care of that. I'm tired. I'm tired. I request, please help me out.
Sure, thank you. Thank you very much.
I have a question. I, I have a question. Are, are you the property owner?
The timer bill.
Yes, we are actually 10 in New York. We worked with the city back then, before we purchased, to build 10 townhomes and move into that place.
Okay, so I...
We are a group of people, yeah.
Clarification question. So the, the conditional use permit tonight, that I hear correctly, this, this is a temporary use until a future use for redevelopment?
Absolutely. That is our goal. Our goal is to bring back life into that project while the city is making the decision. It will be operated once it is, then we will have a plan, move on. I mean, the gathering, the place, will be moved to some other facility or some other place. I don't know where it will be. It will be Mr. Butt who will be deciding at that point. It's a temporary usage.
Okay.
About how many members are part, or do you anticipate to be part of the, of the use here on a monthly basis, yearly basis?
I mean, this will be like a social gathering like Joe was mentioning, that it will be weekly, you know, gatherings that happen. And it will be quiet, kind of a thing, and keep to themselves, and so that is what Mr. Butt, who is there seated, he can give more clarity, but that is the thing I was told.
Yeah, it was more curious just on the parking. If you'd heard, parking came up earlier, so just understanding about how many folks are there on a daily basis.
We can always, because I understand sometimes, very occasionally in a year when there is something like a New Year or some other very big moment, you know, which mark the Hindu calendar, there could be some peaks. We can make arrangements at that time to probably, you know, arrange some other location for parking and do a bus or something, but I wouldn't expect it to be on a daily basis. It's just like any other major events in a year. In a year. And if needed, we can also say, increase the carpool and not even entertain many of them to come by cars. Even that can be done.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be for the applicant, or for the property owner, actually.
The person you were just talking to? Okay. And that is for... I have a question for you, really quick. Have, have you read and received and agreed to the conditions of approval?
I...
For the temporary conditions of...
Yes, we have.
Yes.
Okay, you have.
I read it, yes. Apart from that, there's nothing more, right?
There are a number of conditions of approval about bringing the building back to a serviceable standard.
Okay. There are a couple of things I want to comment on that.
Okay.
We may not be using all of the building. If needed, we can lock it up practically, you know, shield it if we need one major place to use. That's it. Because the plan is to tear the building down. And at that point of time, obviously, based on the city's approval, what it could be, we will be moving forward with that plan. We do not want to invest too much of money. It is more of a community thing instead of, yeah, we can bulldoze today that building, but unfortunately, trust me, 10 years gone by in this core development, we had the Cal Poly team come here. I've been part of all this. So please, you know, and I think Mr. Nagley was the mayor, I've worked with him. Honestly, I tell you, 10 years, I'm older and still no decision. So I really would encourage to relax on some of the requirements that are there because sometimes I tell you, there was, I don't mind picking the name here. Okay, I'll avoid that. There was one officer. He came, he ran through the building and... There was one officer, he came, he ran through the building and gave me a list of items. Even nobody in the world would accept that. All the different code practices brought to the standard. So some of these things we grandfathered, we grandfathered, but that was not accepted. Why this, why that? So I do not want to go back in time about the holding cost, the capital, the money. So much has gone into this project. We are in a terrible loss. And while the city is working on this, if the city feels, okay, this is some other way, we all can come together, help the community, I appreciate that part. I think this is more like a gesture at this point. How can we help the community? It's, I do not want to go by any logic to prove who is right, who is wrong. He is the person and it is for him, we are finding a place.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification on that.
Thank you.
It's helpful. Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak?
Anybody else's public comment on this issue? Okay, we can close that and then take a vote?
Or maybe bring it back for some further comments?
Oh, for further comments? Okay, final comments?
So just for clarification, and this is for staff, this building has had issues over the years, code violations. I'm going to make this assumption, correct me if I'm wrong. So there's been ongoing code violation.
Yes, there have been.
Property owner gets notices, there's potential fines involved, so forth and so on. So they've been working on what they ultimately want to do with this project. This is a kind of a stopgap. One, it would bring the building up to current code so that they, code violations would cease with an ultimate goal at some point in the future that this site would be redeveloped for housing.
So we're only, so yes, that is the comment that the owner made about what his future plans are, but from staff's perspective, we just evaluated the application in front of us.
Yes.
So we really can't comment on any future plans because we haven't seen them, so we don't know the details of it, right? And if we do, then eventually that will come to you. But for this application, the property was in disrepair, you know, had a lot of maintenance issues. So all the conditions here are related to the application that's in front of you today and is in order to bring them up to building code for the use that is applicable for the building code and for maintenance reasons. And so that's why they're being applied, just like they would do any other property who was in a similar condition.
I asked for that clarification because the housing aspect that we just heard now, did not read that in the staff report. So thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
And then just my other question is, is this proposal in conformance with the Old Town revitalization plan, the most recent one?
Yes, so the most recent one was from 2021.
Yes.
There is a variety of uses that are allowed within the overlay district and this is an allowed use per A C U P and that's what's being evaluated. Is there other uses allowed there also? Yes, of course there is. Ultimately, it's up to the property owners to decide what they want to do with the property, whether it's housing or retail or whatever it is, it's a temple. If the code allows it, then they apply and we review it at that manner. So yes, it is.
Thank you for the clarification. I asked that question, of course, because the gentleman was concerned that somehow the overall Old Town revitalization plan, which has a lot of elements to it, that this particular use would not be in conformance with that plan. And what you're saying is that conditional use permit has a number of different uses that are permitted, and this is, in staff's opinion, allowed under the conditional use permit umbrella.
Yes, it was something that was listed as part of that 2021 specific plan along with other uses that are allowed within this district.
Thank you.
That is, and all the uses there were based on, yes, it is a pedestrian kind of focused development that we're expecting there. So there's obviously these streetscape improvements, some of it you'll hear later on as part of the C I P for the Old Town. And so there is this revitalization that is part of that specific plan, but there's a lot of different variety of uses that can go there.
Sure.
And this just happens to be one of them.
And there would be a whole list that somebody could read if they wanted to.
Yes, there's a zoning table and depending on the use and the permissions that are allowed, whether it's just permitted by Rite or permitted by a C U P, then that's kind of the process we follow.
Great. Thank you.
It's one bite of the apple. One bite.
So did we...
You closed the public hearing.
We closed the public hearing and brought it back to the commission.
Yeah.
So we can't open it again.
He had his...
Sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. So given all the information we've gathered, does the commission have any other questions or comments?
I just have another comment, just following up with Mr. Becker. This is basically interim use for the property and ultimately may be developed for residential at some point in time. This wouldn't be in conflict with that future use, right?
That would be up to the, to the property owner. They're applying for this conditional use now. There's no time limitation on this conditional use, so maybe that happens, maybe it doesn't. That'll be up to the property owner, but the C U P will be valid until they decide to be abandoned.
Okay. I can answer that.
So my only comment is, per the materials in front of us, per what is being asked to permit for, right now, it's an empty building, there's lots of vagrancy there, there's lots of police calls there, and what they're proposing is a building that will be upgraded, be locked, be secure, so it will stop the vagrancy, it will stop the, you know, that type of activity, and it will be something people can use for a positive purpose instead of whatever the vagrants are using it for.
Comments as well?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, kind of building on, on the comments you've heard so far. Thank you for the presentation, by the way, Brandon. I, what I'm hearing is, yes, we've heard from the, the property owner, the applicant of potential future plans. Mr. Interiano, as you've stated, we're not here to evaluate that today as we know. So what we're looking at is a conditional use permit, whether it complies with our zoning or does not, which it does. So that's what we are evaluating today. On top of that, we've heard from the community that it has sat vacant and has been a source of police phone calls, vagrants, et cetera. So as I look at this and I look at the conditional use permit and the ability for it to enhance the area and promote safety for the surrounding area, those are things that I, I look to when looking at this because that's how we have to evaluate them. We have to evaluate whether something is compatible and compliant with zoning. And so as we evaluate these applications, as planning commissioners, that is our job. And then we could look at the greater benefit to the community. Does it improve the existing structure? It does. Does it make it safer? It does. Well, we have a parking lot and sidewalks and enhanced landscaping. It will. And so, you know, as we look at a community and the Old Town specific plan, of course, we think restaurants and commercials and retail and livability and folks walking down, up and down the strip, that's fantastic. But this property has sat vacant for a number of years and so I'm hopeful this will breathe some life into it, get some folks there and get some safety into the neighborhood.
Any other comments, questions?
No questions, but the only thing I want to ask is the, remember when they're doing the construction on that, the Old Town, the streets are going to get narrow, right? On the side, there will be parking.
Yes.
I'm glad that the building is used, at least somebody's occupying, so no more homeless, but what about the traffic?
The traffic for the specific use that's being requested today?
Yeah, because the streets are going to get narrow, right?
Oh, so in terms of the improvements of the streetscape on Thornton, those are still under, being designed.
Okay.
They're, you know, almost to a point where they're at 90%. That's the goal. But at the moment, you know, the concept was for the specific plan that yes, the streets will be narrowed and that there'll be some, still some parking on the streets there. But yes, it'll go to, from a four lane to just a two lane.
But I'm glad that at least building is being used.
And there's plenty of parking there so it won't interfere with street parking. Okay. Any other commissioner questions, comments before we close? Okay, all right. We'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Pardon the interruption?
Approve the resolution?
Okay, I'm sorry.
If a motion could be stated, please, before vote.
So...
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Becker makes a motion and anyone second?
I'll second.
Okay. Aguilar seconds it. Now, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let the record show, it was all on. And also the record showed that Dylan, Commissioner Dylan, did show up before the city was up.
That's a good point, yeah.
Make sure the records take that. Okay.
Five ayes.
Five ayes. All voted. Okay, we'll go on to public, E2 item, hearing to consider U2025-002, a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow for new co-located stealth telecommunications facility located on the roof in existing office building at 3900 New Park Mall Road, A P N 30, excuse The subject site is zone RC, regional commercial and has a general plan designation of regional commercial. And again, it will be presented by Brandon DeLucas.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioner. Sorry, me again. So we do have a Verizon Wireless stealth facility this evening. So just a quick overview, it is a conditional use permit for a colocation for a stealth wireless facility. We'll go over the SEQA. There is a desk item that was set on the dais. There was some minor updates to Exhibit C, the project narrative, just adding some clarifications from the applicant and staff will kind of go into detail on that prior to our recommendation. So the applicant is Danielle Hanover, who is here and available for questions later on. She is from Centerline Communications on behalf of Verizon Wireless. The project is located at 3900 New Park Mall Road. The property owner is Investmaster Corporation and again, they're looking for the conditional use permit for the colocation wireless facility. So the subject site is located at New Park Mall. It is zoned, again, RC, regional commercial and has the general plan of regional commercial. The site is bounded by New Park Mall Road, North Magazine, Cedar Boulevard and Maori Avenue. It is surrounded by commercial and office uses, including the hotel that is directly adjacent towards Cedar Boulevard. And the subject site is within the New Park Place specific plan. Under Newark Municipal Code 1718020 and 1726250, stealth communication facilities are permitted within all districts, subject to conditional use permit, and they do list additional required findings for these type of facilities. There are a total of eight findings listed in that section, however, only four apply to this in addition to our normal findings because this is a colocation project. So here is the quick site plan. So the wireless facility is utilizing on the roof. There is an existing equipment enclosure, that's just mechanical equipment for the building. And then they will be adding two new little antenna areas kind of towards the edges of the building. So that includes an eight-foot-tall FRP screen. That's just a screen that allows the radio signals through, but it screens it from visibility. There will be new, three new equipment cabinets, again, within the existing rooftop equipment enclosure, and there will be a total of, the staff report says 24, but with the revised changes from the applicant, a total of 20 antennas. And there are no new ground-mounted equipment. So everything is on the roof, there'll be nothing going in the parking lot or anything like that. So here's a closer view. So the screens are kind of located on the western and eastern kind of corners of the building. Again, the cabinets are going to be within that existing mechanical equipment. So this facility is considered a colocation, not because there's another wireless facility there, but because it's going on an existing building. So in our code, that does define it as a colocation. So that's kind of why it is designated as that. The project will have minimal impact on the use, it is on the roof, it won't interfere with any of the equipment up there. There is also sufficient parking kind of on-site for the maintenance. You know, they're going to have one maintenance guy come park and take the elevator up. So it, nothing too crazy impacting the existing uses. So these elevations, they all kind of look the same because it is kind of the same elevation on all sides, but you can kind of see these new antennas kind of at the corners and then within the kind of gray area there, you see the equipment popping up. Those are where the new cabinets are. So it is all within the existing kind of building height and kind of the envelope by the mechanical equipment that's already there. So Section 1726250 does have requirements for these type of facilities. The main ones are that the facility needs to abide by the required setbacks of the underlying zoning district, which it does, being located on the building, and it shall not exceed the height of 15 feet either above the limit of the district or 15 feet above a legally established building. So in this case, it complies with both. Like I said, I think it's actually under what the total height is with the existing equipment already up there. And the pro, so the proposed project does comply with all those items. Here are just a couple of photo sims kind of showing it. You barely see them, they're kind of located right there on the corners and those are using the FRP screen, which are kind of designed to match the white that's already up there. So they kind of just blend in and are there. So this project would be categorically exempt under SEQA 153013 for new construction or conversion of small facilities, including the installation of small new equipment. Again, this is a rooftop-mounted facility, it's really minor, doesn't affect the overall project or environment. So staff has prepared a desk item to document the changes to Exhibit C. It revised the number of radio units from eight to four and then just updated the lease area up on the roof to get the correct dimensions. And I did also clarify that in the staff report, we list a total number of antennas that includes the antennas and the radio units because on the project plans, it calls the radio units as antennas as well. So, so that's why that number has been revised down to 20 since there was the four that were removed as part of that exhibit update. So staff recommends the planning commission consider the following action. Adopt the draft resolution approving the use permit based on the findings provided in Attachment 1 with the revised Exhibit C. And staff is available for any questions at this time.
Okay, we'll open it up to the commissioners.
No questions?
Comments?
Yeah.
Okay. At this time, I'll open it up to the public if there's any comments or questions on this particular item. Seeing that there's none, I'm going to close the public comments and bring it back to the commissioners if there's any comments or questions.
Well, there is a resolution, so with the applicant, the applicant would have agreed to the conditions of that resolution and, right?
Yes, the applicant has reviewed the conditions and have no objections.
Just want to make sure I got that in the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. And so there's no more comments from commissioners? Okay. Can we get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay. So Commissioner Fitz has made a motion for approval. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Commissioner Becker has seconded the motion. We'll take it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that there are a total of six ayes. Five.
Five ayes.
Five ayes, sorry. Sorry, five ayes. Correction. All right. Onto staff reports, item F. Item F1, adopt a resolution finding that the amendment 2024-2026 Capital Improvement Plan is consistent with the City of Newark General Plan, presented by Mickey Subata.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, my name is Mickey Subata, the new city engineer for the great city of Newark, I started work about two and a half months ago, and we are, in the engine department and in public works in particular, we're very excited about an upcoming new five-year rolling capital improvement plan that we plan to roll out to the city, uh, early next year for adoption, but, in the meantime, we're here tonight, um, to, uh, to recommend, uh, planning commission-approved general plan conformance for an amendment to the capital improvement plan and biennial budget, because there are some high-priority projects that we want to get implemented in the CIP, in the current CIP, as well as reinstating some projects that were missed as part of the last CIP approval. So, I'm gonna go over five, uh, items as part of my presentation tonight, uh, for those that may not have a large familiarity with CIPs, I'm gonna talk about CIPs in general, and the CIP process, I'm also gonna talk about, uh, provide some background information on how we came to the current 2024-2026 CIP. The exciting part of the presentation is that third bullet, I'm gonna talk about a summary of projects and proposed amendments, so these include new projects and projects that we want to reinstate into the CIP, I'll give a sneak peek on this five-year CIP process, that I'll talk a lot about throughout the presentation, and then, uh, recommendations from staff. So, with that, let's start with talking about the capital improvement plan process. So, what is a CIP? Um, it is a, like the first bullet says, a long-range planning and budgeting tool used to identify, prioritize, and fund major public infrastructure and facility projects. A CIP is a very common document, it's a very common tool used by many cities, uh, in the county, in counties, uh, this is, this is the City of Newark Biennial Budget and CIP, here at Newark, we actually combine the CIP and the budget as one massive 300-page document, um, the first 200 pages is the actual budget, the last 100 page or so is the actual CIP. It does help the ma, help the city maintain and improve physical assets by identifying and prioritizing a whole list of, uh, capital projects that the city needs, uh, it aligns investments with community goals, these goals are often, uh, identified and defined in the general plan, um, as well as master planning documents, and we'll cover a couple of those master planning documents later in the presentation today. It also ensures, uh, responsible financial planning and transparency by clearly identifying estimated construction costs, um, as well as potential funding sources to pay for these projects, and the CIP is here in Newark, updated every two years along with the biennial budget. So, what projects are typically covered in the CIP, I've got some pictures, uh, up on the screen here, on the far left, uh, CIPs can cover refurbishment of existing buildings and facilities, that is an image of the Silman Family Aquatic Center, we've got several projects ongoing, uh, scheduled for that particular building or facility over the next, uh, couple of years, the second image is a typical street, so CIPs do include street, uh, uh, maintenance projects, so these are overlay, slurry seal, concrete replacement, sidewalk replacement, striping projects, those are all typical CIP projects, um, CIPs can include complete refurbishment or reconstruction of buildings, so the third image on the right, that's of, uh, Fire Station Number 27 that the city owns, and we'll talk about Fire Station 27 later on in the presentation, and the CIP can also include, um, you know, park playground replacements, and again, we'll talk about that as well, as part of my presentation later tonight. Uh, CIPs can also include large equipment replacement, um, here in the city, it also includes, um, master planning studies as well, even those are, those aren't physical assets, they can include brand-new vehicles, so all those types of expenditures are covered as a CIP. So, how are projects selected? Uh, the image on the right, the project selection process is actually an excerpt from the actual, this, uh, CIP document, uh, we get guidance from the general plan and strategic planning studies, uh, again, the general plan does provide policies and goals and action plans that provide guidance on, um, establishing and prioritizing projects, obviously, we get feedback from city council and staff, last week, we, I just did a presentation, uh, workshop-style to city council, um, a lot of the presentation materials that I did last week are the same as the one I'm giving you guys tonight. We evaluate, uh, funding source, uh, funding and resources, obviously, we need to make sure we've got money to pay for projects, and adequate resources and staff to get those projects executed, projects are prioritized based on legal, regulatory, and safety needs, obviously, those that have the highest safety, regulatory, and legal needs take, uh, priority over, uh, projects that we may, uh, want but not necessarily need. Ultimately, the CIP is, uh, presented and reviewed by city council, um, as part of state law, we do come to planning commission as well, like tonight, to make sure that the CIP and any amendments to the CIP are in conformance with the city's general plan. So, how are projects typically funded? Uh, funding can generally be categorized into two different pots, some are restricted and some are unrestricted funds. Here, we list some of the typical funding sources, uh, gas tax funds are broad range of, of, of restricted funding that can be used for transportation, uh, maintenance projects, so these are, again, these are your street slurry, your asphalt, your grind-in overlays, your sidewalk replacement, um, programs and projects. Capital funds are unrestricted funds, those are typically, um, excess general fund revenue that gets carried over year after year, uh, community development and maintenance fund is a type of, uh, impact fee, they are restricted, can be used for planning, um, efforts, master plans, general plan updates, zoning efforts. Impact fees, development impact fees are restricted funds that are paid by the development committee, every time they come and pay the, a building permit, uh, they pay impact fees, and we have several categories of impact fees, park impact fees is a large of the development impact fee from a dollar perspective, and those can be used for park projects, and then, of course, we go after federal, state, and local grants, uh, most of these are typically for transportation or street, um, related improvements, but not always. So, that's CIP in general, now I'm gonna talk about how we came to the current 2024-2026 CIP. So, back in January last year, um, staff presented an overview, overview of the CIP to city council, afterwards, there are three things that, uh, that happened, uh, by the June presentation, that really impacted, uh, the current CIP. The first was that, of the five council members, we ended up having two absences, the second thing was, of the remaining three council members, some would have to recuse themselves because of real property conflicts of interest, so because we had, you need to have three to have a quorum, so some projects, we didn't have a full quorum to, to, to have council vote on, and finally, there was an understanding among council and staff that we, the city, were in the midst of preparing two master planning documents, the, uh, an update to the Citywide Parks Master Plan, as well as the city's first facilities, um, master plan. So, the combination of those items, by the time the CIP was presented to council in June of last year, um, council approved the CIP in the budget, but only a partial list of projects were approved, so we have projects that, um, later tonight, we'll talk about reinstating into the CIP, because we didn't have a quorum. Later that year, in 2024, in October, the Facilities Master Plan was approved by city council, uh, November, the Parks Master Plan Update was approved by city council, and then, last week, we did, I did a presentation, uh, with recommendations on, um, high-priority projects from both the master plans, as well as reinstating projects, because we didn't have a quorum back in June of last year. So, these are the master plans, or at least, uh, photos of the first page of the master plans, the, uh, Citywide Parks Master Plan on the left, and the, uh, the Facilities Master Plan on the right, uh, both of these documents are comprehensive, strategic, long-term planning documents that provide guidance to the city on the types of projects and the priority of projects that we should endeavor, um, both of these, um, master plans involved extensive community outreach and engagement, uh, workshops, uh, pop-up events, uh, digital surveys, uh, interviews with the public and staff, uh, both of these projects, uh, included doing a detailed assessment of assets, so things like parks and playfields and restrooms and buildings and office space, things like that, um, in addition to the physical act, asset, the, both of these efforts also included a detailed, um, analysis of the programming, so it's not just a playfield, but who plays on that field, when, when does the field get used, uh, both for current and future conditions, so those are for parks as well as for facilities, and both of these efforts also ultimately, uh, ended up with a list of prioritized projects, so there are over a hundred projects identified in both of these, uh, documents. Uh, the Parks Master Plan in particular, so the goals of the Parks Master Plan that to protect and support the existing network, accommodate demands, enhancing, uh, community identity and foster connectivity, these are all taken directly from the general plan, uh, parks, recreation, and opens, open space goals. The city has, uh, numerous parks, um, you can see, these are neighborhood parks in blue, we have larger community parks labeled in red, and then we have specialty parks labeled in green. One of the key highlights that came out of the master plan was a greater focus, a greater need on, uh, improving and maintaining existing parks and existing park facilities, instead of going out and finding new land to build new parks, so you can see the Parks Master Plan priorities are focused on existing parks, so these are, uh, like, upgrading or replacing children's play area, areas, um, improving or, um, adding restroom facilities at existing parks, maintenance and playfields, and existing trails and pathways. The Facilities Master Plan goals, similar to the Parks Master Plan goals, uh, to assess facility needs and conditions, determine growth and future needs, engage the community, to develop recommendations, and to create an action plan, these also came, uh, directly from the city's, uh, general plan. The city has 24 or so different buildings that it assessed, ranging from, we have a wide range of, of buildings from aquatic facilities, uh, police station, governance, library, um, we have a handful of fire stations that we own, even though the Alameda Fire District are the entity that operates or uses those facilities. The projects that came out of, uh, Facilities Master Plan were split up into these types of categories that are listed on the, on the bottom, prevent, prevent maintenance, projects that required renovation or capital improvements, um, pro, uh, project or buildings that are, are required to be new or replaced, or projects that should be sold with purpose or demolished. Before I get into the meaty section of the presentation, I, I did want to highlight that, uh, there are literally hundreds of projects, um, either existing in our CIP, or that came out of the, the Facilities Master Plans, both park and facilities, um, we are intending to look at all of those projects as part of this exciting up-year, five-year CIP process that we've already, are starting to kick off behind the scenes. The purpose of the, of tonight is to really focus on the highest priority projects that we think we can get substantial work done or completed in the, what's left of this fiscal year, so we're gonna go back to, uh, city council for a formal approval, probably, uh, December-ish, so that gives us a six-month window, and staff felt that, uh, based on the results of the Facilities Master Plan and the current workload, there were a couple projects we really felt was important to come and get it into the existing CIP before we start talking about the new five-year CIP. Uh, so with that in mind, these are the proposed park projects, uh, we have numerous high-priority park projects, but again, the ones that are up on, uh, the screen here are the ones that, again, staff felt that we could get substantially completed, uh, with what's left of this current fiscal year, there are projects that we felt that, um, that not, not only were they high priority that we could get done, but we also have funding for, so Birch Grove, um, with the updated playground, updating playgrounds at Jerry Raver Ash Street, the playground at Miraboo, and then All Abilities Player Area for the Newark Community Park, these are all projects that we think we can get done over the next, um, six or so months, combined cost of all these is approximately 6 million, 6 and 1/2 million, we have almost 10 million available in our Parks Impact Fee, um, so we're, we're planning to use, utilize those funds and have 3 and 1/2 million left over in Parks Impact Fees. The proposed facility projects, again, we had 24 buildings, uh, in various stages of, of needing help, but, um, the, these two projects in particular, the Fire Station Number 27, uh, as well as Fire Station Number 29, so 27 is on Cherry and Maori, southern corner, it's a picture on the right, and then Fire Station 29 on Russian Drive at Newark Boulevard, that's the fire station on the left, both of these stations need significant upgrade, and that was a result of the Facilities Master Plan, there are significant operational challenges with both these facilities, they both lack, uh, secured perimeter fencing, they have issues with drainage, with their phone line, with their, even their fire alarm system, there are significant code updates that need to happen to both these buildings, um, but what really triggered, uh, our focus on these two buildings in particular, uh, was the life safety aspect, so both these fire stations do not have adequate emergency generators, and they both need significant seismic upgrades to meet current building codes, so given the, the life safety aspect, we felt that these two projects really need to come and get, get going, um, over other high-priority projects, including community center and other projects identified in the master plan. Estimated cost for just the preliminary planning is 3 and 1/2 million, we propose to use funding source, um, excess revenue for Measure GG, this is just for preliminary planning for the next six months, um, these projects combined, we estimate it's gonna take between four to five years before we're done with construction, they're both very challenging projects, there's a lot of uncertainty with both of these projects right now, uh, but we do want to get going, at least with a lot of the preliminary planning efforts. Uh, I mentioned that, uh, back in, uh, June of '24, there were a couple of projects that we couldn't, council couldn't vote on because we didn't have a quorum, among those, we feel that these are the projects that are the highest priority that we want to get going, um, during the next, during this current fiscal year, so these include the Old Town Priority Development Area Streetscape improvements, both the design and construction, the Railroad Quiet Zone Implementation for Design, that project will have several years before it's done with construction, and before we could apply for a quiet zone, uh, but we do want to get the design completed as soon as possible, and the Thornton Avenue pavement overlay phases one and two, this goes from I-800 all the way to Spruce Street, if you include Old Town, so these are the, uh, capital improvement projects that, um, council could not vote on because they didn't have a quorum back in June, our goal is to have, um, a lot of these projects in, in design and in construction over the next, um, next year. A sneak peek into the new five-year capital improvement plan, so right now, we have a two, Newark, Newark has a two-year CIP that goes along with a two-year annual, biannual budget, what we're, what we are gonna, what we're proposing to do next year is to switch over to a rolling five-year CIP, um, and it's needed for several reasons, to provide more realistic project delivery forecasting, as you can hear, that we have a lot of big projects that take more than two years to go through planning, design, and construction, so this will help us forecast, uh, for these larger projects, it's needed to provide more long-term accountability and transparency, a lot, again, we want to make, be, we want to make sure that both council and the public have an understanding of what projects we're gonna focus on beyond just a two-year window, and same with the next item, to make sure that we've got appropriately, appropriate funding identified beyond a two-year window. Sometimes what happens, and this goes align with, to be better prepared projects for long-term grant readiness, is that a lot of times, and these are like for transportation-related grants, we'll get notice that a, there's a call for projects, and oftentimes, they want to make sure that projects are shovel-ready, meaning the design, the planning, the SEQA, the design is ready to go, so having a five-year CIP, uh, plan will allow us to be ready for that, if we anticipate a call for projects, say, three years out, we want to make sure that we can design early and be ready in case that call for projects goes out, and again, to provide more better, uh, better long-term council and community alignment beyond just a two-year window. Our plan is to do an introductory council presentation in early 2026, um, that'll include prioritization of projects, and a draft five-year CIP review in spring of 2026, and hopefully, if it gets approval, uh, kick off our first five-year CIP by July 1 of 2026. Uh, so the item before you tonight is to, uh, recommend that the amendments to the CIP with the new projects and the reinstated projects are consistent with the general plan, um, these are the goals from the general plan, they're also listed in the staff memo, I'm not gonna read them. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but they're from the transportation, the parks reckon open space, as well as the community services, goals that align with the, um, new projects as well as the reinstated projects. And staff's recommendation is to find the amended budget and CIP, uh, to be in conformance with the general plan. So that concludes my presentation. I welcome any questions or feedback.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Fantastic presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's not necessarily related to, uh, conformance with the general plan, but you brought up an interesting, um, point right there as it relates to funding when it comes to these projects. So a lot of times, and if I, I might have misheard it, but if, what I thought I heard was, the, in order to get funding, it's, it's better, and we're more competitive if these projects are quote-unquote shovel-ready. And so does that mean if we, if we approve a plan, July 2026, right, we have our priority projects? Did, will the city then go and issue an RFP to hire a consultant and start working on improvement plans almost effective immediately? So we have these plans ready to go and we're shovel-ready for those funding sources? How do, how do we run that in terms of a city?
Well, we'll incorporate that as part of the five-year CIP. Obviously, there are more projects and there's funding or staff or consultants to do them all. So we're going to prioritize the projects. But to the extent that we are aware of upcoming grant or, uh, funding opportunities, again, there's a lot of transportation-related grants and call for projects that we anticipate coming in the next couple of years. So to the extent that we are aware of those, we may bring up some transportation projects up in terms of the design schedule to anticipate that call for project.
Right. Uh, the, the Old Town was the one that came to mind right away, right, in terms of just all the infrastructure improvements and what might be needed there for us to go tap in and get that funding at a state level or county level, wherever it may be.
Old Town's, but the Old Town project is a great example because we have several different funding sources to pay for that project.
Wonderful. What, um, sorry, this is more procedural. I, I guess, when, when the city issues a, an RFP, is that a council action? Do those actions go to Planning Commission, or is that purely, once we approve the CIP, is, is staff able then to go and, and work to get everything done and be competitive through that process, or do they have to go back to council?
Staff would have to go back to council to ward, uh, construction projects or consultant agreements above a cer, certain dollar threshold.
Got it. Okay. I'm just thinking speed and efficiency, so we're competitive. Okay. That's my other question.
I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so I know that Alex Lee had secured funding for the quiet quarter on the railroads. Um, and so, I know there's funding, and you mentioned in the Old Town that it was going to wait until after the construction of the street overlay and everything like that. Did I hear that right?
We are trying to incorporate the, you're talking about the quiet zone as part of the Old Town project.
Because I know he secured it, not just for like one spot.
Eight spots.
Right. And so I know you were waiting till the street work was all done. Was that what I was hearing, like when the street work's all done?
For the railroad crossing that is at part of Old Town, we're trying to combine that as one project.
Okay. So, so will the other, um, quiet quarter zones with the railroad, will those wait as well, or?
The, the idea is that we want to get designing, or we've actually, we've actually completed 30% design on the other eight locations, other seven locations.
Okay, so it's just the designing on those?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Yes, uh, good presentation. I saw your one at the plant, or at the city council the other night, too. That was great. On the two fire stations that we're replacing, and this is just maybe a procedural item, but what do we, you're going to tear those down completely and then put new fire stations there? What happens to the police or the fire response while they're under construction?
Great, great question. So we're courting with the Alameda County Fire Department. Um, they actually have three other fire stations that they are starting to work on right now. The idea is that, part, part of the uncertainty for this, our project, our two projects, is that, yes, we are going to have to find interim facilities for both the equipment and the staff while we're demoing and constructing new fire stations. So that, again, that's part of the uncertainty with the cost and the schedules. We have to find whole new separate interim facilities for both fire stations. Those are projects unto themselves, almost.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have one question. You had mentioned the, uh, four park renovation plans, and you said we want to get them done in the next six months. So you're saying you're going to, not you particularly, but staff will get those four park renovations done in the next six months?
Staff, staff believes that we can get, uh, substantial work or completion done on these projects.
On all four of the parks?
Yes.
Wow.
Now, caveat, the parks facilities, the parks master plan identified multiple improvements beyond just the playground equipment that I, that we're proposing. Um, so there are a lot of projects that are proposed for all the parks. Our focus is just on these four playground replacement projects.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay. All right. So we, do we need a motion to approve the general plan amendments?
We do, I believe. Correct? We do need a motion, correct?
Adopt a resolution?
Yeah.
To approve the resolution, yes.
Yes. Yes.
I can't.
I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution.
Okay.
If it's in conformance with the general plan.
So Commissioner Becker makes a motion. And Commissioner Dillon seconded the motion. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let the record show five. Onto item G, Commission Matters. G1, Report on City Council Actions.
I don't have any report on city council actions. However, I did want to mention that, um, we will be having a meeting on November 19th. And this is the rescheduled, um, Maury Village Project. There'll be nothing else on that agenda in particular, um, but that'll be on November 19th.
Then we will move on to item H, Planning Commissioner Comments. It's open to any commissioners.
Have a safe and sane Halloween and enjoy it.
I have nothing.
Nothing.
Okay. Then we will go on to item I, which is adjournment.
Thank you. Good piece of work tonight.
All right.